Okay, so we have before us, as you know, we have the last few years. I want to thank the Board of Finance and Chairman Manjos for coordinating these joint meetings with Town Council. I think they've been very productive. I think both boards agree that they've been useful in the past, and so we wanted to continue in that spirit this year. I just want to point out one thing, that our joint meeting originally, when it was noticed, it was intended just to discuss the capital budget. And so our joint meeting notice only calls for discussion of the capital budget. So our colleagues on Board of Finance, the reason why they invented their agenda while we're together, so to save time and be efficient, we can discuss, in the context of their meeting, the budget at a high level, as well as the capital budget. So for purposes of joint meeting, just for structure and organization, we're going to discuss just the capital budget process for the joint meeting, and then we're going to adjourn our meeting, and we're going to join, as participants, the Board of Finance, going to discuss other budgets. So please, for now, just limit your questions and comments to the capital budget. Before we begin, does anybody want to say anything on the capital budget from either Council or Finance? Before I turn the floor over to Mr. Kellogg, just for discussion as to how he sees this proceeding jointly as we move through the process. Anybody? No? All right, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I am passing out, passing out right now, some updates to the year one of the Capital Movement Plan, which would be the capital budget for next fiscal year. The back of your budget box had the initial document that I delivered as part of the budget. As you'll recall from my presentation on the budget, I said the capital budget was still very dynamic at this point in time, and that we needed further collaboration with Town Council and Board of Finance to get to a final product. To that end, what I'm handing out are some changes that have already been identified. I'll hit some very quickly. The Board of Education, oil tank replacement is really only a removal project this year. That brings that cost down significantly. There have been some things that have been moved out to subsequent periods. For example, on the Social Services, the senior center parking lot has been moved out to fiscal year 20. The, there is, you know, so again, and we try to note those things in red, for those of you who were lucky enough to get a color copy. The process, as I envisioned it, was, in my initial conversations at the Council's Strategic Planning Committee meeting, was that I would get project justification or project concept forms, similar to the process I had outlined for new projects, because I thought that was a good forum or process to gather the information on a project. And that was the intent, that it's going to be a long, protracted process, literally get the form from the department head. That's, that'll be the, you know, to the extent of the information we have currently. So I'm in the process of continuing to collect project forms for everything that remains on the capital budget for next year. With the exception of things that have already been vetted or have been given Council endorsement to proceed. So for example, the new EMS facility, given you've established an EMS billing committee, it didn't seem like, and you've got plenty of data on that, it didn't seem like it made sense to present a form for that. You know, our ongoing road paving project is somewhat self-explanatory, but all the other projects, for the most part, we will get forms submitted. And my thought was that what we had kind of done last year was the Council Strategic Planning Committee kind of had a joint meeting with some of the representatives from the Board of Finance to do kind of a initial pass or vetting of everything, so that they could do that in a kind of a more roll-up-your-sleeves workshop fashion, and then come back to the full, their respective bodies with recommendations. Typically, I don't think Council is looking for a finalized capital budget for the purposes of voting on the rest of the budget, which is what is, you know, what you need to vote on by the end of the month. So my thought is that we could continue this process with Council involvement, even when Board of Finance has the budget, and we can get to a point where we can have a final product well before the April referendum. So that was my thought process, and I'm certainly open to any additional thoughts or ideas on that.
I'll just speak for conversations that we've had, and we've done in the past. I think that's an excellent way to move forward. We've talked in the past about utilizing our Strategic Planning Committee to really drill down some of the capital budget items. And so I think that's a good idea. And I also agree that I don't think it's necessary that we complete and finish our review prior to us passing the budget to Board of Finance. In the past, we've discussed this typically at this meeting or a subsequent meeting, and/or in consultation with the Finance Department and the Board of Finance, just to get an understanding as to what our tolerance is. And then typically, I think the last year especially, we attended one of the Board of Finance very last meetings, and just made sure that we were on the same page. So I think that's a good process. I think utilizing SBC is going to help a lot. And, you know, our informal agreement has been that Town Council does the heavy lifting on deciding which projects are appropriate to move forward, and then Board of Finance decides what our tolerance is, or what our ability is to fund and funding sources. And so that's worked in the past, and I don't think it should change. I'll open it up for discussion. Anybody on Council want to comment?
It's fine with me.
Mr. Reep. Anybody else?
I was going to say it's fine.
Ms. Martin.
The oil tank replacement, Monroe Elementary, that's what it says here. That's what it tells me. It's not the Massacre.
My understanding is Monroe Elementary.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yes.
She asked if it was Massacre, he said it was Monroe. And that's.
And again, so we're clear for members of Council. What our intention is that SBC, as a subcommittee, will review the capital expenditures, proposed budget initially, and projecting out, and then report back to Council. And at that time, when we think it's appropriate, Council will vote on that plan, and then we'll inform Board of Finance.
And my only other recommendation would be perhaps you, perhaps Board of Finance would like to, you know, the Chair would like to designate, you know, the, whatever, two or three members of Board of Finance to sit in with SBC in that joint meeting. Last time, I believe it was.
Well, we don't need to do it tonight.
No, we don't need to do it tonight.
We don't have to do it tonight. Yeah, it'll be collaborative.
Right, I'm just saying, you know, for purposes of scheduling.
Mr. Connor?
Just being the BOE liaison, this DDD clarity, have you glanced at what they're doing, or no?
Not for purposes of this conversation.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not speaking for you, Ms. Martin, but I don't want to go off on a tangent, especially with our Finance colleagues here, they don't like that. I'll turn it over to you. Anybody on Finance have any problems with that structure?
It worked so well last year, but there's no suggestion.
Okay, I agree. All right. Anything further for, anything further for a high-level discussion on capital at this time?
With regards to the oil tank removal, I know this is significant savings versus doing a replacement for that. My only concern with regards to not replacing that oil tank is that we eliminate the hedge that we had instituted in various facilities between gas and oil. I guess what I'm trying to maybe talk openly about here, real briefly, is five years from now, we decide all of a sudden the oil tank's a bright idea to put back in the ground. How much more is that figure versus doing it now? I know that's probably an impossible question to answer, but, you know, again, we spend a lot of time in trying to have our dual-use fuels in the system. We're eliminating that, assuming that gas is going to be forever and day better than it will.
Mr. O'Hara?
Mr. O'Hara, the Board of Education did in their last meeting at the lead discuss the cost of going back to oil in the future as almost $150,000. And I agree, one of the things to do is, as they're going through this process and abandoning the tank, is find a way to allow oil lines to still be in existence. And if they want to go back to oil, bring a convalt tank. Put it above ground tank somewhere, use it as you're, you know, sorting through the situation. You're bringing out which is, you know, keeping the economies of what fuel is least expensive, as opposed to going back to a buried tank. All you got to do is leave some lines available. But they did, I believe it was in their meeting minutes, look at their online, that tonight's meeting was $150,000.
How far out was that, going to be, five years or?
They just, I think they just threw a number out there that if we do return to oil after taking the path we're taking right now, it could be $150,000. So I think they, I think they just kind of spit all the number, and then added a number of years to it. It's probably not too far off, you know, if you're going back, if you're going ahead five years. But again, maybe for planning purposes, there is some way to retain a dual-fuel setup. So those convalt tanks can be put on the ground, you're done with it, you put it somewhere else.
I'm just trying to.
I think you can even lease it.
But again, for purposes of these kind of conversations, I think it's more appropriate to have these discussions in SBC. And/or, you know, at the time that Council reviews on this, we can certainly have a discussion later on. So I don't want to get, I don't want to get down into any kind of detail. One, two questions I maybe we should address, though, before we get to those more drilled-down discussions, is do we have, does Finance have a projection on what our tolerance is for an overall bonding threshold, and the same question as to capital reserve? Do we have any understanding of that yet, or is it too preliminary?
I think it's too soon, because without knowing what the state's going to do for sure for funding, we work with, that's why keeping the capital at the end makes a lot of sense for us, too. But yeah, we, at this point, I think we should just keep that open until we know more information.
Fair enough, okay. Anybody else?
Mr., I'm not sure if this is appropriate to ask now, and you can tell me, we can talk about this at another time, but the Wolf Park parking lot project that has, that has not been bid to meet requirements, that's not on, that wasn't on the original capital.
Yep. If I can speak to this, Chairman. Yes, so this was a project that was conceptually going to be done earlier, but it clearly won't be available until next fiscal year. But it is, there wouldn't be any bonding anticipated for this. There are a couple of different sources of funds. There is, there's a LoSOP grant that's already kind of allocated. And the intent is that at a future date, Parks and Rec Department is going to request that some of the funds that have been transferred out of program account, AKA Contra, that have been intended for the tennis courts, but were not necessary, be basically returned, will revert back to the town, and they're going to ask for another allocation of that out for this project. So that's why this, as we're discussing that, I realize that his intention was to try and target this for August timeframe at the earliest, so that puts it into next fiscal year. So we added it to the list.
Thank you.
Anybody else on capital, high-level stuff? All right. All right, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Mauer, second vice chancellor, all in favor? Everybody, just before we adjourn, I think it's probably appropriate that, Madam Clerk, do you have the, for roll call purposes, do you have everybody who's present here?
Yes. But I can't tell you who the person is. These guys.
That's okay. These guys, these guys the characters?
These guys.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you have, if you need any clarification. We're good? Okay. All right, so we're adjourned, and pass the ball back to you on Board of Finance. Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn. So we're just there? Or now, no reason to. So, motion to adjourn. I don't know if we have a motion, but we'll be started. I think you just declared us back in session. Just we're in session right. So, we adjusted our agenda to move the point of discussion as new business above our review of minutes. If we do that, so we can go right back into the original.
Motion to adjourn for January 16, 2018, head of voting record.
Oh, you're still discussing, I'm sorry.
We're still on budget.
Sorry.
You're fast. Hold that, hold it. Mike, I don't know if he wanted to lead off with on the budget, or if he wanted to have Frank make the lead on discussion, discussing that.
I mean, I agree with you on the capital approach. I mean, the main thing, I think I wanted to touch on was, obviously, we still have the big unknown of the state. I think Ken took a very good approach of being conservative with the updated numbers that we've got. Although, even though they're telling us they did a two-year budget, then we have supposedly hard numbers. I'm not comfortable assuming that, so I think that's something, again, we will leave till the last minute. Hopefully, we'll have even better information then. The other part, it goes back to fund balance, which again, we will tackle in our last thing, but I just want to make sure I've discussed that with Ken. The approach he's proposing, and I agree with it. And it's basically doing the same approach we had last year, where we will allocate a million to a fund balance. This year, we obviously didn't need it, but our fund balance is pushing up against our limits right now. So, you know, in the short term, we're going to have to address that on finance. But I want you to also be comfortable with that we are proposing using fund balance, and that's something that I'd like Council to be aware of, and, you know, make sure they're comfortable with as well. Because that's, I think, the direction we're going to be going, but again, that's something we'll finalize at the end. That just back, you know, the, also the way that we've done the last years, I don't plan on finance going, you know, online, looking for hundreds of dollars. I want us to focus mainly on the capital, the funding, the bill rate issues, and then also on life of the, hopefully, if we've got some time, which I think despite this year, trying to think about and looking at some of the big numbers that we never dived into, which still bothers me that, you know, we don't really pull out the medical contracts and look at those, when it's that kind of dollars. And I also want us to look a little deeper, you know, we do it on the pension committee, but I think it's important that we dive into also the police pensions, because that's a huge number. So I'd like us to focus on those kind of projects this year, as opposed to the, you know, line item of, you know, are we looking for $500?
Agreed, that makes sense.
Yeah. But I'll like that.
If I can, again, the purpose of this meeting, it's very preliminary, but for those new members of Council, this discussion, to me, is important in having Finance present at this initial meeting for a number of reasons. And first and foremost is, we've had a lot of debate in years past, outside of the presence of Finance, before we started these joint meetings, as to the structure of the budget. If we are comfortable conceptually with the structure of the budget, how it was being presented. Mr. Manjos touched on that a little bit in that call today. It's one of the new members to understand that we felt that one of the most important functions of this joint meeting, having us in the same room, was to have a high-level discussion on the structure of the budget, some of the projections that were being made on the revenue side, which has been discussed in more detail recently amongst both of us. I know Finance has done it for many years, but Council and Finance have been collaborating on that much more. Some of the Reserve, Special Reserve funds, and the other funds that are out there as well. And Mr. Manjos hit on allocating monies from the Reserve as well, and the general fund discussions. But I just wanted to cut you on that. I don't know if you want to say anything, Mr. Kellogg, as to the structure of the budget. I know you presented it, I wasn't here, but I just want to make sure that we understand the process moving forward, what our role is going to be. Because I think that by defining the roles initially at this first meeting, we're able to be more of an aid to Finance, and it's really done a good job of dispelling that whole feeling in town that doesn't exist amongst the boards and commissions, but does exist amongst everybody else out there, the voters out there, that, you know, Council sits up here, and I don't know, Mr. Manjos was directing, was pointing his finger at us when we're talking about line items of $500 and $100. I feel like that's what Council does all the time. But we want to be more of an aid to Finance in really diving into the departments, drilling into some of the concepts, not so much looking at how much we're spending on paper, but looking at some of the concepts, where we're going now, where we're projected to go, kind of giving more of a direction for where we see the town going, and then leaving it to Finance to drill down into what our tolerance is. Are we spending money appropriately? Is there a better way to do it, and things of that nature? So that's what we've been doing the last few years, and I think it's worked really really well. It's very different than what we've done in the past, and we want to continue to do that. That doesn't mean that if we present motions, you're welcome to ask other questions you want, if you think it's appropriate to cut $50 on a line item, you're more than willing to do that. I'm not discouraging that by any means. But I think our time is best spent in aiding Finance in really drilling down in certain departments, certain projects, things of that nature. So I would encourage Finance to please utilize us, you know, and if you want us to do some advance work, we get the first crack at the department heads, and Mr. Kellogg, and this big book. So if you want us to drill down, really look into any areas, we're happy to do that. And if you have questions, I just want to make sure that you feel comfortable asking us for assistance and/or direction in collaborating as to where we think the town should be going in certain projects. So that's kind of how I'd like to approach it this year. I think we have a nice concise budget. I thank Mr. Kellogg for presenting it, and Ron and Heidi and Finance for doing that. But I'd really like to take this opportunity, not to really drill down right now, but talk at a high level, make ourselves available, and move forward in that direction. So I don't know if anybody agrees with me, but I'm hoping you do. Mr. O'Hara?
First, I'd like to thank for selecting, for increasing the number, and bringing in the format to the budget, whatever online I really liked. I might sound like a little bit of a contrarian here, but that's fine, I'm used to doing that. I think we need to pull back even further. The state of Connecticut right now is looking at a $400 million deficit. There's an article out there that says that next year they're looking at a $2.5 billion deficit. And the year after that, a $3.5 billion deficit. All of these revenue enhancements, like taxing our tires and tolls and things like that, toll money won't show up until 2023. I think we need to basically bolster the work that you've already started, Ken, and dig deeper into some of these things, because I think the $4.6 million we think we're getting from the state is going to be less, and I think the year after that, it's going to be less, and the year after that, it's going to go away. I also have had an ongoing issue with the Board of Education health insurance. They have changed their agent, and I see no change. Their agent fees, their administrative fees are still about $102,000 a month versus $104,000 a month. Their claims are still through the roof, their fund is mostly depleted. So I think between the loss of state aid, and at some point, we're going to figure out what's going on with Board of Education. We need to bring conservative to a new level with what we're doing as the government of the town corrupt. And I understand everybody's needs and wants and desires, but there's a, there's a serious issue out there. And I think we really need to get ahead of it, and been getting ahead of it. I think that's, I think that's been a real positive for us, but I would strongly urge us to keep staying ahead of it. That's just where I am.
It's Finance's meeting, so. I'm sorry, you said.
Looking for other comments.
Okay. Everybody, I'm just.
I mean, I do agree with Pat on there, we should really take a hard look at it. I mean, you know, to his point, we, I'm not sure where the, what state, what funding we are going to get from there. We should really take a look at, you know, where we can, you know, trim, where it's needed, you know, throughout the, all departments. I know we did that last year. I think we should take another hard look at that as well. So again, you know, not to deplete the needs of the town, whether it's Board of Finance or any department, but it's something that we should take a, I think, a look at.
I think we take a hard look at it. And years I've been on it, we take a hard look every year, and try to make the best decisions based upon the facts that we should see at that point in time. I like to try to deal with facts and any kind of projections or tests that we see. I don't support cutting and slashing to potentially knock down the fears. So if they materialize, then we deal with it. But until they materialize, you know, I think we try to live today. That's fine, but they're materializing as we speak. There's, there's no one who is doing thoughtful commentary about the state of Connecticut, saying that the state of Connecticut is going to increase your ECS fund, increase your excess cost share, and increase your county to road. The governor is holding back.
50% of. County to road?
Yeah. You know, it's, you've got people leaving the state, roads haven't just left.
It's here. I, Ted, I hear exactly what you're saying.
I hear you, I have no problem taking a hard look at things.
Which we did last year, and then we didn't have to back on the spending and use the reserve fund that we thought we did.
Well, everybody, everybody cut 5%, everybody cut 5%. Every department in this town cut, cut from their budget, almost, well.
Yeah, I think that's, that's one, I mean, it's exactly what we did do last year, and we built the contingency area for it to happen. And I think that kind of an approach, whereas we're prepared for the worst-case scenario, and if the worst-case scenario doesn't come, we can still function. But we can't, don't underestimate the potential for the worst-case scenario is still there, and probably more likely this year and next year than even last year. So I mean, it's, it's not getting better. It's, we got to assume that we are assuming to cut it, state funding, but we're going to have to take forward and say, you know, in two years, we're not going to assume the same thing we're going to next year. It's going to be less, I mean, I know that as well. So we just need to make sure that we are prepared for that in fifteen, two and three years out. That's what I'm looking at. Which is why I want us to spend more time on the medical. I want us to spend even more time looking at some of the pension longer enough, because it is going to go. And the county roads and all those kind of programs are going to get gone. So let's just, you know, go into that assumption, and if it doesn't happen next year, we can figure out a way to cover it. But I did think, you know, I like the idea that Ken's taking is adding some of the stuff back into the operating budget that we were just bonding. Because I think it's the same spending, it's just different financing methods. So I follow that approach, but I think we do cannot forget that, you know, we are in a, the state is in a desperate situation, even though Monroe is not right now.
By the way, I think the contingency move was brilliant. And with the things I'm talking about, I see the contingency as a way to buffer that. So if we do, if we do go into line items and we say, hey, look, we don't have a choice, this has to come down. You can put it on the contingency side. You're already at a negative mill rate for your expenditure. And, you know, if you decide that there are things that maybe aren't going to happen, you know, you can, you can put that in the contingency. And if you get to, if you get to May, and the state has come through with money, you know, you can go ahead and do some of those things.
Right, and I think we have to, we have to keep in mind the difference between, you know, absolute ease and life or loss. And, you know, the life or loss, you go into contingency law.
And avoid that.
Correct.
I agree with Mr. Quinlan, actually, just for the record. I think, I don't know if it was the intention to, if it came out wrong, but we, I agree that, you know, every single year, I think, and I don't like to speak for Council, and I've attended many Board of Finance meetings, I know that we do examine each and every department, each and every line item with diligence, and trying our best, I think, cohesively, trying to be as lean as we possibly can. So I do agree with that, and I think that's what makes Monroe a special place, that we have wonderful volunteers, and I think, you know, partisanship aside, when it comes to budget time, we're generally.
I can't hear what was going on there.
I'm sorry, you want me to speak louder, Mr. Manjos? I haven't ever, I've never been asked to do that, I'm sorry. What I was saying is, I think we do do a very good job in Monroe of really examining each and every line item and department, and the entire budget front to back on an annual basis, trying to make sure that we have as efficient government as possible with, you know, economically sound principles. I think last year was an exceptional, we did an exceptional job, you know, we, a lot of thanks should be, should be given, and a lot of recognition to Board of Finance for really doing a wonderful job with the budget. and a lot of recognition to Board of Finance for really doing a wonderful job with the budget in light of that situation. And I agree that the economic forecast is glim, but what, what concerns me, just, and again, you know, it's, it's where we get so many elected officials in one room. What concerns me in looking at this budget, especially the capital plan, is seeing so many projects that we approved years ago, still sitting there on the capital plan. And I'm not talking about projects that were wants or wishes, or we hope one day maybe to, you know, you know, reconstruct the gazebo into some, you know, giant mausoleum out there, or something like that, nothing like that. I'm talking about the Wolf Park field, I can name probably five or six projects that should have been done years ago, years, years ago. And what, what I think is a problem is we're now operating in a vacuum, because we're, we're trying to reduce our overall cost and looking to make reductions in certain departments. But we're also having to deal with moving forward projects that were approved years ago. And to be honest with you, I think it's disingenuous to our taxpayers to reconsider some of those projects, because a lot of people, a lot of time and effort went into good, healthy debate amongst various boards and commissions, and, and there's a, there was obviously a true need for those projects then. And unless there is no longer a need for those projects, and I don't see that with any of these projects I'm speaking of, you know, we need to find ways to move them forward. And I think the only way we're going to do that, and I think Mr. Kellogg ran on this, is, is to continue and to prove, to improve the processes within Town Hall to get us to further collaborate amongst boards and commissions and have conversations in advance, like we're doing now on a more regular basis. But I don't want to lose sight of, you know, at budget time, I feel like we're constantly looking at, and I'm, I'm, I'm talking about myself. We're constantly looking at what can we reduce, what can we reduce? How can we, how can we slash and burn the budget to make it more, less impactful on the taxpayer? But at the same time, we need to look at ways to make our government more efficient and lean, keeping in mind that those projects that we've approved already need to get done, and there's certainly going to have to be projects like that moving forward. And that's really what I'd like to focus on this year moving forward, is, you know, getting some of those projects done. I mean, the one that sticks out to me is, you know, we're still talking about Wolf Park after all these years. And prior to that, it was, you know, Chalk Hill, and I'm sure we can, amongst us, we can go through many, many projects. But, you know, I don't want to lose sight of, of those projects and those needs. And I agree with Mr. O'Hara that, you know, it's, it's here, and the economic crisis is here. We have to figure out a way to balance that moving forward, but let's not lose sight of some of those, some important projects.
And actually, the good news on what you're talking about with Wolf Park, with Wolf, the state is paying for the field, are they paying for the splash pad too? So that's, that's, that's a inter, that's an interdepartmental execution. So, you know, that, that gets done with all the people cooperating.
Right.
And that doesn't cost us anything. But again, there's an extensive list of capital things, things that have to be, you know, some of these things have to be balanced, because you have certain needs at EMS, you have certain needs at Monroe Volunteer Fire Department.
Right.
You can't put one before the other, and you're gonna have equipment out there, right? And yes, I've seen firsthand, you know, Town Council, Board of Finance, going back seventeen years, doing their diligence on the budget. This is a different animal. I mean, this is, you know, at some point in time, we have to, we have to accept the fact that Hartford's not going to be giving us, you know, upwards of five million dollars. So it's either going to come through taxes, it's going to come through the grand list, or it's going to come through projects, the departments doing fewer things, or managing what they're doing better, which again, I think, you know, Ken is focusing on and getting us all to focus on.
One other issue that I just want to bring to your attention, in my review of the budget, I asked finance to look at, and I know Mr. Reed's gonna help us do this, but the IT department budget. The reason why I'm asking finance is because you have control of the Board of Education budget, and we don't in our review. And so that IT budget is split. We're basically paying the Board of Education for a portion of the IT services in town. And yet, council doesn't have the luxury of reviewing any of the contracts, any of the agreements, or any of that. I've already brought this to the attention of Mr. Kellogg, and I know he's going to look into the issue from a contractual standpoint, but that's something that we struggle with on an annual basis. Mr. Zambury generally presents very well, but unfortunately, we don't have control of that entire expenditure, because a lot of it rests, all of it rests with Board of Education, and we're just paying our quote unquote share. So I'd ask if you are looking into some of the other issues that you look into IT as well, and see if, if you can assist, and we'll certainly communicate if we find anything ironed. But, you know, from an actual expenditure standpoint, a lot of it rests in the Board of Education budget.
We're having to spend more time on that.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm not running your meeting again, sorry.
Is there other comments on, or last chance comments on budget before we move on?
I may. I guess one thing I just wanted to point out, first of all, just in terms of your prior conversation, I, I hear you loud and clear, that's why I, we are moving one million dollars less than the state's telling us we're gonna get. So I agree with your line, your line, your thought process. I just wanted to, just, one thing I want to state is, I, as, as you know, the next two days, the council will have a bunch of workshops, we'll have the department heads coming in and be able to go through things in more detail. One thing I would ask, because there have been a couple of inquiries, which are certainly welcome, but I would ask if either council or Board of Finance have specific information requests from my office or from, particularly from the, the department heads, the staff, that you please route that through your respective chairs to my office, so that we can do that in a coordinated fashion. Because obviously, they're trying to juggle various priorities, I want to make sure that they're focusing on what's important. Not that this isn't important, but whereof, that we just need to fit in. And I'd hate to do one thing for one member of council and find out Board of Finance would have liked the same thing. So if there's something you'd like to do, please follow up through your chairs, get it to me, and we'll figure out whatever we need to do to get you the best information we can for you to be able to deliberate on the budget, so.
Yeah, that makes, I like getting common questions coming at us directly.
Is, is there a way to kind of take those questions, they, they go to you, and then they, to put that, that'll all be in the meeting minutes? Or, I mean, when you, when you, when you get into specific questions, is there a way to put that in a document? Because you guys are, the Town Council's gonna be working, and then next month, we're gonna be working, and to avoid repetition and to see what you're digging into now. I mean, if I go on the internet and, you know, see, you know, the, these are the, you know, so Ken, I mean, you're gonna get all the questions, so.
I, I certainly don't have any issue, I mean, the minutes of the budget before jobs should make sense.
Yeah, just some kind of Google Doc. So here's, here's the question.
Are we still using Google Docs, this administration?
I have to stop at the same degree.
Well, just one more, one more question. We did not, my interruption, I apologize. We, so, Mr. Manjus, you and I decided that we didn't need to schedule another joint meeting, but in the past, finance has been kind enough to invite council to one of your meetings when you had some more certainty to the direction. So I would just ask if you extend that courtesy to us again this year, and I'd be happy to notify all of council members to try to make that work.
Right, and that's what we were, you know, that's what I was suggesting as well, is we do this session, and then once we get enjoy, we can invite council to one of our later sessions, just review everything wherever we're at before we finalize it.
This year, we'll be, we'll have been invited to two of your sessions, so I appreciate that. We'll have to return the favor next year.
That just demonstrates that the collaboration is working.
I also just have one comment, and through looking at the budget, one thing that I'd like the Board of Finance in your discussions to talk about, as I'm sure we will talk about on the Town Council side, which is the effects that the use of reserve funds could have on future budgets, not only with bonding rates, but also with the sustainability of increasing spending while utilizing our reserve funds, how, how that is able to be, how we can sustain that kind of spending without dipping underneath our thresholds eventually with utilizing those reserve funds as part of our actual money for the budget. So that's just an item that I think needs to be addressed on, in both.
You're gonna be in for a great surprise, Mr. Mauer, because this group's got that. Together, every single year, we get a nice report that most of us don't understand, but we do get it, so we're gonna be taking care of it, so you'll be pleasantly surprised that we'll have that information.
I'll be able to explain it to you.
There you go.
Yeah, we have, we have a policy that we follow with a minimum, and we are very conservative with respect to reserve funds. So as, as Frank pointed out, you'll be pleasantly surprised when you go through the process with us and see what we have.
I look forward to it.
All right.
Any other questions?
Just thank you for including us, and we look forward to another successful budget season.
So what do you say for the rest of our meeting?
Thanks, but no thanks. We are.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.